Two, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fuller.
Yes, here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Mr. Abel, please be in and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, the minutes of council meeting. January 18th.
Yes, I believe everyone has received a copy of these meeting minutes. I haven't heard anybody with any claims on that, so I will pass these each individually. Excuse me, I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the special Perrysburg City Council meeting held on January 18th, 2022, as written, dispense with the readings.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
All right, and then I would also like to move to approve the meeting minutes of the city council meeting held on January 18th, 2022, as written, and dispense with their reading.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Okay, we have now special reports, letters, communications, citizen concerns. You guys wanted to come up and say a little bit? This is the time? Guess I should have made that a little clearer.
Yes.
Please say your name and what business it is and all that.
My name is Jordan Stahl. I am the Marketing Manager for Capital Inc., and we are celebrating our 40th anniversary on February 4th. It was started by Jeff Hammond. I don't know if Jeff, you want to come up and say a few words?
Just thank you for this acknowledgement. It's been a fast 40. I hope I see 50. But it's been a great community to grow a business in. It's been a great community to raise a family in. It's been a great school system to have kids educated in, and I just say thank you guys for what you do. You step up, you're making a difference to keep Perrysburg strong. You're building a great community for businesses like mine to be successful. And it's got a lot of people that came tonight, and the support system in this community is awesome. I'd like to thank Joanie. She's been my business partner through this whole thing. And Matt Zuckrel, who's filming, he's been with me for 26 years, so a great acknowledgement there. And Kevin, who's a software engineer. You know, we do some amazing things here. Steve worked at Computol. He's now a pretty heavy guy at Microsoft and working in the big leagues, so he graduated to the majors. So we feel good about a lot of the things we've been able to build and do, and thank you guys for allowing it to happen here in Perrysburg.
Why don't you, it isn't the chamber or the rotary, but why don't you say a little bit about what your company does?
Oh, well, thank you for the opportunity. Computol exists for the sole purpose of helping companies integrate IT. We deliver tech and talent to make a difference for businesses who need specialty services that perhaps wouldn't afford to have all the things that they would need. We have a team of 16 professional people working out of 118 East Third Street, and we do software engineering, software and web development. We have a strong cybersecurity practices. We help companies have strong security and develop initiatives to be compliant with certain industry standards. And most specifically, we help companies network people together so they can get work done, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to administrative reports. All right, did the proclamation. The only other report we'd have is I want to let everybody know and also recognize the city staff, particularly the three division has been working hard getting ready for what might likely happen in the next day or two. So they've been working hard. We have plans in place to address it. We also asked residents, we know it's going to be a lot of snow. Be safe, stay off the roads. If you don't have to be on the roads, please stay off them. That makes it easier for the snowplows and the crews to be out there doing what they need to do so that we can get back going and operational as a community as soon as possible. City offices on Thursday and Friday are likely to be closed if the snow gets to a certain level, so we want to encourage people to be safe and to not be out and about. So I also want to thank all the administrative staff. Preparation has done a lot of hard work already put in, and hopefully that comes, we're ready to handle and tackle the problem that we're going to have. So that ended my report. City administration.
I just want to reiterate that we've been working on that for the last day and a half, and we do have plans in place for the department and division to either be on-site to tackle their job or work remotely. We do have literally a handful of people whose job does not allow them to work remotely, so they will also not be in the building. But we think it's safer to have them not report to work than to be on the road and possibly get stuck and cause our emergency responders to have to respond to their rescue and their safety as opposed to the general public. So we're very prepared, we feel very confident with your planning process.
Thank you. Finance director.
I have no report.
Continues. Law director.
I just wanted to say thank you for budgeting a law intern. I'm introducing all of you. This is Thomas Dillon. He's the legal intern for the semester, and he's doing a great job. We drafted one of your resolutions for you today.
All right, President Council report.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a report, but just a question and update. I know with the recent legislation regarding the ability to have a second DORA, I'm curious to see where things stand with the possibility of introducing a DORA over in Levis Commons area.
When the legislation changed to allow the city to have a second DORA, we immediately reached out to Levis Commons and spoke with them. I'll approach an answer. We're kind of waiting for the legislation to take effect and then to ask.
Yes, we have met with Levis Commons management staff. They're actually in the process of updating their application from their original application to make sure that it's still in compliance with all the rules and regs at the state level, and they're prepared to deliver that application to the mayor's office on the date that the legislation becomes effective. And then the mayor and his staff will do the review that we did last time and provide the mayor with a recommendation with either pros and cons of it or just the positives to it, and then he will make the decision on whether to afford it to the city council.
Okay, thank you, because I know that's something that I believe we've had a few residents who would love to see that over there, and if there's anything we can do to expedite that, I think it's March 23rd is the date that that becomes active.
It was the 23rd or 26th, six in my mind.
Yeah.
But yeah, I've been working on it.
Okay, and I just would love to see something of that nature proposed so we can have the conversation here in council.
You anticipate that?
And that would be the end of anything I have to say today. Oh, until my next section.
Committee report. Yes. All right, Finance and Economic Development.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no report, but tonight I will be introducing legislation for the amended budget. Tonight will be the first reading. I know not all the committees have had a chance to discuss all the changes yet and proposals, but if we do all three readings, we will probably be voting on this on March 1st. Or if everyone's comfortable by the, after the second reading, maybe we can, you know, get that vote there, but we'll see how everyone, everyone gets a chance to get all their questions answered. But so tonight I'll introduce the first reading, and I would like to introduce ordinance eight dash 22 and that its rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ordinance eight, 2022, admitting ordinance 54, 2021, previously amended by ordinance four, 2022, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the year ending December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
If there's any discussion, I suppose we have an hour later, but I have had my questions answered to date.
I would just add, if anyone has any questions, happy to answer them. Please get, direct them to Bridget Amber or myself, and we'll be happy to answer any concerns, or if you want to talk about it in the committee, which is what this is designed to do, I'll give you that time. We're happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, the next meeting, Finance and Economic Development, is scheduled for Tuesday, February 8th at 5:30 PM. End of my report.
Thank you very much. Safety.
Thank you, Your Honor. The safety committee meeting was called the order on January 25th at 6:00 PM. Members present were Barry Van Huisen, Mark Weber, and Ms. Matroni. Also present were Kate Sandretto, Law Director Patrick Jones, Chief, Chief, Christopher Sergeant Lieutenant, Louie Rua as Higher Chief, and Tom Donato as Deputy Fire Chief. The approval of minutes from January 8th were passed without objection. Taser purchase for the police division. Chief Jones is requesting that legislation be submitted to the safety committee to allow for the purchase of 43 Taser sevens and the necessary accessories to Perrysburg Police Division, a total cost of $141,452.75. Purchase price including Taser seven for each sworn officer, two spare Taser sevens, the docking station, software licenses for each Taser seven user, training items with five-year warranty on all hardware and training and 35 packages for five years. Chief Jones is requesting that this be approved as an emergency measure due to supply chain issues and lead times. The committee agreed 3-0 to send the council for approval. Propheneax agreement. Chief Jones is requesting that legislation be submitted by the safety committee to allow for the renewal of the Propheneax maintenance agreement. This agreement is necessary to maintain police division's records management system, computer aided dispatch software, mobile terminal software. He is requesting that three readings be weighed to ensure that there is uninterrupted service, made it with 3-0 to send the city council for approval. Radio maintenance for the police division. Chief Jones is requesting to allow for the renewal of a radio maintenance agreement with PNR Communications. This agreement is necessary to maintain the police division's radio system, which includes the dispatch console positions, radio controlled room hardware, and all mobile and portable radios for the Perrysburg Police Division. Ms. Weber wanted to know that Chief Jones is happy with the system. He answered that it was more than paid off communications and seamless. The annual cost is slightly higher this year as they have added some additional radios. Committee agreed 3-0 to send this council for approval. Purchase of two unmarked vehicles for the police division, and these will come from the fourth picture five. Chief Jones is requesting to allow for the purchase of two unmarked vehicles for the Perrysburg Police Division with funds from the federal shared proceeds. He is requesting to purchase two 2022 Ford police interceptor utility hybrid vehicles, a cost of $37,959.35 each, to the Montrose Ford in Akron, Ohio. User may look more like a customer, a consumer grade vehicle. Committee agreed 3-0 to send this council for approval. Purchase of four marked vehicles for the police division. These will come from the general fund. Chief Jones is requesting to purchase four 2022 Ford police interceptor utility hybrid vehicles, a cost of $37,876.14 each. These vehicles would replace the 2004 Ford van that was repurposed to the Department of Public Service. The 2012 Ford van that was transferred to Perrysburg Municipal Court. The 2014 Chevy Tahoe and the 2015 Chevy Tahoe. Chief Jones is also requesting the necessary equipment and installation services with PNR Communications in Akron, Ohio to upfit these four new vehicles. I wanted to, I asked and wanted to know how many vehicles the police division has had as total on the road. Chief Jones stated that they have a total of 23 total vehicles currently. Committee agreed 3-0 to send both of these into city council for approval. Purchase of one vehicle for the fire division. Chief Rua is requesting the purchase of one 2022 Ford police interceptor vehicle at a cost of $37,959.35 to Montrose Ford. This vehicle will replace a 2008 Ford Crown Victoria fire utility vehicle, which will become, which will become a utility vehicle. The current utility vehicle is a 2003 Crown Victoria and does not handle well in snow or ice conditions. The style will be the same as the unmarked vehicle for the police division, just a different color. Committee agreed 3-0 to send this council for approval. Conversation regarding how to move forward with downtown Dora and the potential expansion. I indicated that the potential expansion would, as proposed, would be from Elm to Walnut Street and south to Fifth Street. I believe that we need to have a more formal presentation since some, everyone seems to have some of the same questions about the potential expansion. There was much more discussion between meeting members, Kate Sandretto and Chief Jones. Ms. Matroni wanted to know the reason for including the Almera grounds potentially, and Chief Jones responded that events like music at the market or the car shows made it difficult at times to enforce the rule boundaries. Ms. Weber wanted to know about the potential also of extending it to her department. The closed budgets, American Recovery Fund discussion, I think it's American Recovery. We have, we have. Chief Jones stated that the idea is for the design case to hopefully be done this year for the second floor of the police division. Chief Rua stated that on this part of the, stated that on this part of the amended project contract to fire, as they are not finished, they have not finished them for kind of a original signature, and that was after the inquiry of the laws. The fire division in the amended budget. They're being in on the business, we adjourned September 7th. So there are seven resolutions, six of which have been asked to be passed as an emergency measure. Would there be an objection to put the six of those together, or would you like them already separate?
Okay.
Very good. I'd like to do this without keeping them all. So I would like to introduce resolution three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, if you dispense with a second and third reading.
I second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution three, 2022, a resolution authorizing purchase agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of 43 new tasers for the police division in an amount not to exceed $141,452.75 and declaring an emergency. Resolution five, 2022, a resolution authorizing a radio maintenance agreement with PNR Communications Services, Inc., for radio repairs and maintenance for the police division in an amount not to exceed $25,987.8 and declaring an emergency. Resolution six, 2022, a resolution authorizing the purchase agreement with Montrose Ford in an amount not to exceed $75,918.70 for the purchase of two 2022 Ford police interceptor utility hybrid vehicles for the Perrysburg Police Division and declaring an emergency. Resolution seven, 2022, a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with Montrose Ford in an amount not to exceed $151,504.56 for the purchase of four 2022 Ford police interceptor utility hybrid vehicles for the Perrysburg Police Division and declaring an emergency. Resolution eight, 2022, a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with PNR Communications in an amount not to exceed $65,751.64 for the purchase and installation of vehicle equipment for the police division and declaring an emergency. Resolution nine, 2022, a resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with Montrose Ford, Akron, in an amount not to exceed $37,959.35 for the purchase of one 2022 Ford police interceptor utility hybrid vehicle for the Perrysburg Fire Division and declaring an emergency.
I moved that resolution three, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, 2022, to pass the emergency measures.
Second, discussion.
I have a couple of questions. I think, yes, we can achieve this. Since he's here, you might have gotten a chance to talk. Do we have any unmarked vehicles present in the house?
We do.
Okay. And how do you use those? Like, I don't want to, if you just scroll them pretty soon.
No, the unmarked vehicles are used for administrative staff because we don't always necessarily need a fully marked vehicle with the extra cage and that, and that for our detectives, we use unmarked vehicles. But that's why.
And then, these are all being purchased from a dealer in Akron. I'm kind of assuming we try and find, I mean, heck, we've got three auto dealers here.
Yeah, so Montrose Ford and Akron got the state bid price this year. So we're purchasing on state bid. The last two years, we've been able to purchase from Ballin Ford that matched the state price and have actually beaten it, and asked for quotes from them again, and I told them I needed to buy the 14th so I could have the safety committee, and they sent me the quote last Friday after safety committee. So they lost that one.
We tried to, we tried to buy those over the cliff. And then my other question was this, the total of six vehicles, I mean, I'm dealing with four, I guess we've got fewer compared to. That seems like a lot compared to prior years.
This is more, yeah. So we had the money, we had federal forfeiture money that came in at the end of last year, and that money can be used to supplant general fund money, so we decided we could use it to replace some of our older unmarked vehicles. And then typically, I've been buying three cars a year, but as you're aware, in this year's budget, there's approval of three additional officers, well, three additional officers, we're going to need additional cars as well, so we put that fourth car under the share in the general fund.
Chief, didn't you say that you're getting close to getting them all replaced, or how many more did you have to go?
We're probably about two more years to cycle out the old titles and get the hybrids in place.
Okay.
Just to build off what Tim asked, the same question I have about the unmarked vehicles, do you use those for patrol anytime?
If we use them for patrol, we don't use them for patrol, we're doing traffic enforcement and that, but we may use them as a, you know, vehicle that's in the background, is watching, observation.
Okay, and then, just, I didn't see it in a minute. Are we just, the tasers that we're looking at, are we just in a cycle, it's time to get new ones?
Yeah, so the tasers we have, and this is a picture that I gave in the safety committee, so the top picture there is the X26P that we have, looks similar to a handgun. The bottom one are the Taser sevens, which are bright yellow, less confusion on what it is. Yeah, the 26Ps we've had for a number of years now, we have issues with them, and so we decided to upgrade to the Taser seven, which has been out for a couple of years now.
Okay, and then, I assume I'm just going to ask a couple of questions about the taser. Do they feel differently in the hand than the traditional handgun would?
For me, they do, and it's how we carry them, the officers when they carry them. We carry them on the opposite side, so it's a cross drop when you're getting the tasers out, but they're still, it's still a pistol grip, but it's definitely different.
Okay, and then do our officers, is part of their training, do they get hit by these tasers?
No, that's optional.
Okay.
Taser, it's actually taser's recommendation that leave it as an option. We have, our instructors have all been hit with a taser. I'm up to not to.
And I appreciate, I understand why you would choose not to, I just, I was curious if that was part of our training.
No, but training, we do do, go through taser training every year, and with the new tasers, we'll actually dedicate a little extra time this year to that training.
Okay, that's all.
When I took the Citizens Police Academy, our instructor volunteered for it, so we all got to witness that, and that was, that was fun.
I haven't just yet, and then we talked about this in the picture that the chief just showed us, there's a distinct difference between the old and the new, just from yellow to black.
Yep.
And then, secondly, I think each officer will have their own taser, but now they're being shared.
Right, we share the tasers right now, we don't have enough. So with these, the policy, kind of model of Austin and other agencies, but they'll dock those tasers every 30 days, and then that actually downloads the data out of those tasers, so we'll know if the taser was used and not reported to us, or if they had a discharge into the floor like I did several years ago with it, we'll know it doesn't get reported.
Okay, well, I first, thank you for the flyer, I guess is the word I'll use, that you put together explaining exactly what you're asking for and how it's used and what kind of warranties. You clearly did your homework, and I appreciate you investing time in non-lethal options as well. Appreciate everyone's questions, could have been answered all the questions that were, the questions that was asked.
Any other questions for the chief? Always, thank you very much, chief. Roll call.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
I would like to meet and read this resolution four, 2022, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for reading by number and title only, to dispense with the second and third readings.
I second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution four, 2022, a resolution authorizing renewal of agreement with Propheneax in an amount not to exceed $34,273.28 to provide maintenance and technical support for police division computer systems for the year beginning March 21st, 2022.
I move that resolution four, 2022, to pass.
Second, discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller. Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
So the safety committee next meeting will be on February 2nd at 6:00 PM. I'm going to conclude my report.
Preparation. Thank you, Mayor. I have no report. Our next scheduled meeting is going to be on February 8th of 2022 at 6:30 PM. Thank you. Claims knowning?
Uh, no reporting on that. We were supposed to move on that. I have a point, and I said very good, and I was going to read it, so we canceled that. I think we should kind of kind of, I don't know, very important, how do you feel about that?
Or pull up my calendar.
When's the date? It's Thursday.
I always prefer Tuesdays and Thursdays, it helps with my parenting schedule.
Um, this is next Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be timed. Okay, well, I don't, we then set it for that Thursday, I don't know what the date is.
The 10th.
Yeah, okay, Thursday, February 10th at 5:30.
Sounds good to me.
It's Thursday, but I'm sure we passed that word back home to Brody.
Yes.
So I'll be further.
Yeah.
I guess we did have.
One little thing.
Sneak up on you.
Um, I'd like to introduce, I'm adding a 2022 rule, rule to suspend cooperation by number five, I move to dispense with the second and third reading.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ordinance nine, 2022, admitting the zoning math of the city of Perrysburg, which is in Ohio, to regional parcel 261, 4003, 000000013, 000 from OS2C4.
No zeros?
Yep.
And then I'm going to give you the ordinance nine, dash, 2022.
That's okay.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huisen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Thank you. Personnel.
Okay, I do have a report for you tonight. We met on January 25th. I called the meeting order at 5:08. Present were myself, Kevin Fuller and Tim McCarthy. Also present were Kate Sandretto, Kelly Chafant, and Brian Thomas, the city engineer. We approved the prior month's minutes. Kevin Fuller abstained, and then Mark was in the crowd, so he assured us that he didn't see any inconsistencies as well. Then we reviewed and approved job descriptions for staff engineer and HR coordinator. Ms. Chafant presented the job descriptions for staff engineer and HR coordinator. The staff engineer will, under general direction, supervise seasonal personnel, review plans for public improvements, monitor field progress of construction, represent the city at meetings when directed, and coordinate work of various technical consultants. Mr. Fuller was curious if this position was accounted for in the budget, which it was. Mr. Thomas wanted to keep the job description more big picture and leave it open to see who applies and will tailor it based on their experience. He is hoping to do more designs in-house to save some money for the city. Ms. Chafant stated that the prior engineer was a project manager, not an engineer, and we outsourced everything before. The committee approved this job description 3-0. The human resources coordinator supports the daily operation of the HR office, including the facilitation of employee recruitment, onboarding, and exit processing, outside agency pre-hire activities, medical and dental benefit plan administration, workers' compensation claim review and tracking, electronic employee document management, and annual HR projects. Elaine Bishop, Ms. Chafant's administrative assistance, administrative assistant, has taken on this role, so is not in an additional position. The committee approved this job description 3-0. Restructuring of the law department. I stated that there had been some activity on this, but we are still waiting on outside council's opinion on the matter. Other business, Mr. Coleman stated that he had an email from council president Jonathan Smith in regards to passing legislation for all non-bargaining employees raises to come to personnel committee on an annual basis. Mr. Coleman would like to get some habit of looking at wages and be on top of being on employees clearly competitively. I would like to look at some legislation for this at the next personnel committee. I believe, and I'll just add this to the report, that has since been addressed by a law director. Thank you for getting that, getting that to us. I know we've handled a lot in personnel in the last year. I don't know how I didn't recall that. So we slipped that into the pay band legislation?
You're all very consistent. You requested this when we were doing K-band, and so we put it at the end of the K-band so that it was required not for approval, but that personnel see the raises every year.
Yep.
For reduction, if there's a reduction.
Perfect. Perfect. So that has been addressed. Thank you for giving that to all of us timely. There was no further business. We adjourned at 5:24. Next meeting is going to be February 22nd at 5:00 PM. Nothing further.
Thank you. Public utilities.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public utilities, committee of your force, meeting was called at order at 6:31 PM by myself, Kevin Fuller. Committee members are present. Myself, Jim Matroni, and Jonathan Smith. Also present were Kate Sandretto, law director, Ellis Gotti, director of public utilities, and Matt Choma, director of public utilities, or deputy director, excuse me. There were no citizens' concerns. The approval of prior month's minutes were read. There being no objections. Minutes were approved 2-0 with myself abstaining. Sewer credits tabulation. Ms. Gotti explained to the committee members that for the calendar year 2021, there were a total of 32 credits under $1,000 each, that there were granted at an average of $217. For the month of January 2022, there is one sewer credit for an outside spigot leak. Mr. Smith was curious what the W P B U S P acronym stood for. Ms. Gotti stated that it stands for Water Power Backup Sump Pump. W L stands for Waterline. Water and sewer miscellaneous fees. Ms. Sandretto explained that with the current fees associated with fixing and installing meters, that the city is currently losing money because the product costs are rising as well as the employees' pay. She said that because of this, we need to consider raising the fees of these items. We are not looking to make money on this. We just do not want to lose money longer. Mr. Smith wanted to know about the higher fees for outside versus inside water changes. Ms. Sandretto explained that citizens inside the city are contributing to the income tax base, which means this could be an incentive for those outside the city to annex. Ms. Gotti explained that the additional charge goes into the reserve fund and helps inside city residents. I stated that I would like to see some comparison of inside and outside from local neighboring communities that are in the same situation, and would also like to see this reviewed annually. Guarding sanitary sewer and oversizing agreement. This resolution authorizes an agreement with Coventry Glen LLC for the construction of oversized sewer infrastructure in conjunction with real estate development of Coventry Point Plate 2. The agreement has been drafted and consistent with the city's sanitary sewer master plan and the sewer infrastructure cost recovery document. The difference in the cost due to oversizing is reimbursed to the developer pursuant to the terms of cost-sharing agreement. I was curious why an emergency measure, or this wasn't appropriate. Ms. Sandretto is asking for it to be an emergency because we have to reimburse the developer who up fronted the money. Committee agreed 3-0 to send this on to city council for approval. There being no other business, the meeting was adjourned at 7:04 PM. I submit this for your approval. And next meeting will be called Wednesday, February 23rd at 20:22 PM.
I have a real quick, just recap on that. I just want to make sure I understand that's the plan we do with the sewer payback. I guess it would be. Yeah, it's so they install more than they're required and we help fund that cost because it ultimately.
They're oversizing the pipe for us, so there's, they would only be required to save this volume.
Yeah.
But because we want to make sure that the downstream can be served, we need it to be oversized, so instead of running a parallel pipe, we work with the developer and they right-size the pipe for us and we pay the difference between what they're required to resolve and what pipe we're asking for.
Perfect. I thought that was, expect me to ask the same thing next time this comes up. I think it's once a year.
It actually saves us a lot of money.
Right.
Because we would have to go through and tear the road, brand new roads up.
Perfect. I thank you for the clarification.
I'd like to introduce resolution 10-2022.
A second, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 10-2022, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Coventry LLC to construct oversized sanitary sewer infrastructure at the proposed Coventry Glen Plate 2 and declaring an emergency.
I'm sorry. I would like to introduce. I'm sorry?
Next line down.
Oh, here? I moved that, excuse me. Format. Resolution 10-2022. Second.
Discussion. They all did the same thing.
I apologize, I said I asked that during discussion.
No, no, no. Everybody's struggled reading their person.
Yeah.
Nobody's.
Let's catch on it for a couple.
Nobody's throwing A's, don'ts, because I have been there and didn't done that. Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
And mine wasn't unanimous, so you're way ahead of me.
And I'll go ahead and understand that. I think we'll all forget about this, but in the next meeting as well.
Yep.
Service committee.
Service committee was called at order at 5:30 by chairperson Jim Matroni. Committee members present with Jim Matroni, Kevin Fuller, Mark Weber. Also present was Kate Sandretto, law director, and Brian Thomas, and city engineer. No citizen concerns. There being no objections, minutes on November 29th, 2021, meeting were approved 2-0. Mr. Fuller abstained. Orleans Park bid award. This resolution awarded the bid for the Orleans Park parking lot to get us paving and excavation ink in the amount of $168,749.73. I know I got that wrong, so, thank you. I padded the bill a little bit by accident. Ms. Sandretto has requested city council where the bid to get us paving and excavating ink included contingency amounts in excess of the bid amount to permit change orders to be authorized in the field, which is approximately 10% of the bid submission. Mr. Weber wanted to know about any significant changes, and Mr. Thomas explained that the landscape items will be added. There will be 50 parking spots with two handicap lots, which is required by the number of parking lots that we will have. All landscaping will be done by the service department. Committee agreed 3-0, send this into, onto city council for approval, contingent on recreation committee voting. Rotary Park bid award. This resolution awards the bid for Rotary Park parking lot to GEO Gradle Company in the amount of $292,899.78. Administration has requested the city council where the bid to GEO Gradle Company include a contingency amount in excess of the bid amount to permit change orders to be authorized in the field, not to exceed $29,289.97. Ms. Sandretto explained that they had a rebid this project due to a typo. Mr. Thomas explained that the bid includes all of the alternatives. The committee agreed 3-0 to send this on to city council for approval, contingent on our recreation committee voting. A resolution to allow the city request grant funds for the school travel plan. Safe routes to school program provides resources, technical assistance, and project funding to encourage and enable students in grades K through 8 to walk or ride the bikes to school. Comprehensive report to S R T S includes both infrastructure and non-infrastructure countermeasures and programs. The city of Perrysburg has an existing school travel plan, S T P, that was created on August 1st, 2009. Before applying for S R T S funding, the plan needs to be updated. O D A recommends this be updated every five years. Mr. Thomas explained that it is very unlikely the grant would be approved with the plan as it is. Committee agreed 3-0 to send this on to city council for approval. Amendment to resolution 6-2021 for fire station number 38 improvements. This resolution will amend the agreement originally awarded in resolution 37-2021, amended by resolution 66-2021 by providing additional funding in the amount of $5,000 for the state, for the state number three, the station number three improvement project. Ms. Sandretto explained that the.
38. I'm sorry.
Oh. Explained that the plans that were filed did not actually match, which is in the building, has to change orders. This is all to benefit the health and safety of our firefighters. The committee agreed 3-0 to send this on to city council for approval. Proposed budget ARPA fund discussion. Ms. Sandretto stated that the committee members received an email from administration with proposed budget amendments as well proposed expenditures for the ARPA funds. Ms. Sandretto answered budget questions for the committee members to the best of her ability. The committee members wanted parameters of what you could use ARPA funds for exactly. Some of the ideas the committee members suggested are park on the west side of the city, bike path along the river, bike path along Indiana, downtown ADA, economic development for businesses impacted by the pandemic. Alley repair, expanded parking at Hook Park, expanded parking behind the Bull, Clubber Riverside Park. Other business, Ms. Matroni mentioned the condition alley that are on the parallel to Pine Street between 5th and 6th Streets. The alley is rutted badly and it has continually gotten worse. Mr. Weber had a citizen complaint in regards to the alley between Cherry and Walnut Streets, between 6th and 7th, not getting plowed. He was curious about the policy on the order of alleyways being plowed, wanting to know if a certain truck has been used, or is it a staffing issue? There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 6:26. Respectfully submitted by myself. Next meeting is Wednesday, February 23rd at 5:30 PM. Okay. Let me catch my breath and then I'll introduce the. Resolution. I have a couple of resolutions I need to introduce. I would like to introduce resolution 11-2022, moving that the rules be suspended and allow for its reading by number and title only to discuss with the second.
Agreed.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
I move that resolution 11-2022 be passed.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
I second.
No, sorry.
Sorry. Resolution 11-2022, a resolution authorizing the city of Perrysburg to apply for funding for the safe routes to schools project through the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency.
Move forward.
Oh, yeah.
We're past, this triggers, want to move a passage?
Yeah. I move that we pass the 10, what, 11?
11.
11.
25. I move that resolution 11-2022 be passed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce resolution 12-2022 and move that the rules be suspended and allow for reading by number and title only and discuss with the second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 12-2022, authorizing an agreement, I'm sorry, amendment to resolution 37-2021, authorizing the agreement with Lake Thorpe Company, Inc., for the construction portion of the city of Perrysburg Fire Station number 38 Improvement Project and an additional amount not to exceed $5,000 and declaring an emergency.
I move that resolution 12-2022 be passed as.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Other business, one thing real quick I forgot to mention in the present council
of Council report, so I apologize on this, but there is a public hearing that will be held before the March first, twenty-twenty-two. City Council meetings, the items on the agenda, there's going to be actually three public hearings, one at six-fifteen regarding proposed code amendments for gym and fitness facilities as well as land use and base owning district tables. At six-twenty, there's going to be another proposed code amendment, again, for land use and base owning district tables. And at six-twenty-five, there's a special approval use hearing for Rotary Community Park Master Plan Amendment for the Pickleball Court.
What's the date of this thing?
It's going to be March first, twenty-twenty-two, so just plan to be here before six-fifteen.
I got a couple things around the business.
Sure.
Um, I just want to check on the update on when we might be able to livestream.
So we have interviewed two companies who have all the streams of capable creation of agendas, mids, and executive engagement on the website plus the livestream. And I think we have a follow-up meeting with one of the providers to the name of a selection that may or may not come to the city council for approval depending on the dollar amount. And then we will be through.
Is there, is there a goal timeframe?
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Maybe just keep, keep moving that forward along with some other I C projects.
Okay. Any ETA? I guess that-
I honestly don't have an ETA, but I can follow up tomorrow morning with our I C manager, Debbie, and sort of get off from work.
Okay. And then my other question is going to be, I feel like we need to talk about this water tower. We had an email this week with some designs. It's my understanding the administration is recommending, so I, I, I might need a little clarification. Option A, I believe, is that the recommendation from the administration?
The option A was the Disney design that is getting based in the construction budget.
Okay, so that was what was approved?
That is, that is the standard that the, that any of the contracting companies that were bidding on it put in there was the basic name of that, of that community.
Okay.
So that was in the basement for thirty-five thousand.
So, and then that table that we got from Seven Brothers painting that has A, B, C, D, I, I know that, can I assume that A means option A?
Yes.
B means B, C means D on the picture?
Yes, it should follow the sequence of the picture.
And then, and then D means option A, because then we got another, so did you condense it down to four that you sent to the?
What we did is what we are looking for is different degrees of either artwork or amount of paint or different colors of paint to give a sense of what that initial cost would be. So even though there were other options, they were very similar in terms of complexity. So we didn't give all of them to the contractor for estimated pricing.
Okay.
We were trying to narrow it down by, by the amount of paint and the amount of language or, or pictorial descriptions that were out there.
Okay. And then, um, has there been any communications with the C V B on, on this project?
I, I have just in general talked to Christine Best. I actually have a meeting with her.
I have, I can talk about it. The C V B, as you know, the C V B's hired a new person, Christine Best. C V B is not, is directed towards heads and beds and her opinion is that it doesn't, it doesn't do that. Spending money from the C V B, C V B wasn't interested. I said, you might want to revisit this at some point in the future, but at this point it wasn't put in the C V B's budget and she spent a little bit of time looking at it. As I understand it, you know, you're driving by, how are you going to make the connection between spending that value of money, having that then turn into people staying in Perrysburg? Was her opinion that she had better ideas for the money for, at least for the first year and, and that's where we left it. So I did have a extensive discussion with her about it. Council had conveyed their preference or ideas about it and as she said from her experience, that wasn't, there wasn't a bang for the buck.
Okay.
For her purposes.
How, how much did we spend on the revitalization of those cannons? Was that the C V B or was that the city?
The actual revitalization of the cannons was done in-house by the staff of the service department, along with using an outside vendor who actually, I think was actually Anderson Stab Shop is the one that actually stripped the cannons and refinished them for us. And then our staff created the actual cannon stands and then we patented out for a pack three head for those heavy vehicles.
Okay. How much did it cost?
It was the C V B that did it, wasn't it?
The C V B did not expend money on the cannons.
Somebody, I thought somebody donated money to it.
Um, the Coleman Company or maker company actually donated the concrete for the Goldstar Memorial for that base, but not for the cannons.
I think-
Okay, so how, about how much out of pocket to do that?
Out of pocket?
For the city?
It's probably close to fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And then the rest was just in-house regardless.
How, how much time do we have to pursue different options?
My understanding is that the timeframe to drain the water tower in order to not just affect the repairs but to also that paint is in the spring because of the temperature, swaying temperatures and condensation inside the hole.
Let me, let me rephrase. When do, if we were to, so we're, we're looking at a budget amendment right now. Say we were to add something to the budget to accommodate one of these plans or even something more complicated, when would that need to be to Seven Brothers?
For pricing?
Yes.
I would say it took them a week and a half to give us pricing on these options. So I would say literally the sooner the better because it may be something that they got to, well, first of all, it's something that we'll have to farm out to somebody if it's different than this, get more specifics in terms of quantities of paint because of the size of the letters, the number of codes, the color codes, to get them to refine any of these prices, let alone a new design. So it's, it's going to have to be pretty quick, I would say by mid-March at the very latest.
Okay. Um, is there any plan by the administration to, to present these different designs to the public?
There has been no discussion. We wanted to first get them in the hands of City Council.
The administration's view is that residents are always, I mean, if council wants to spend money on that, that would be something council would need to vote on and act. The administration's opinion is that the sign, it has agreed and passed by the council, it serves a particular purpose and that residents are complaining to me all the time about expenditure in their budget accounts for water and sewer and I'm not sure that that's the best bang for the buck. So that was kind of our, why we submitted it at that rate. If council wants to take additional action, happy to do that. Happy to do whatever council instructions to do on that, but we feel pretty comfortable that the sign is designed.
So, I guess, so the answer is no. I'm trying to, so is there, is there any, uh, you're not going to present these designs to the public?
Well, we can do that, that's fine. I mean, but, I mean, I'm not sure.
Like, are we trying to involve the public in this decision?
We have a budget, we've, we ever designed it on that budget number. If council puts more money in the budget-
Didn't we, well, didn't we, didn't we design it at about like four hundred thousand less than the budget? Something like that?
I know it's maybe less than what the budget, original budget had been, but that doesn't, again, is it a budget you budget? Are you budgeting to spend the most money or are you budgeting what this is for the appropriate amount of money? We haven't decided if council suggests we put this out to the public for comment. We can do that. I'm not sure if council's taking a vote on that to-
All I'm worried about is-
If you don't mind, I just want to make a quick comment because I, is, in the Public Utilities Committee, we had asked at least numerous times that we really wanted to have an stay input in artwork. So I think that there was at least some desire with council to be involved within this conversation. And that's as soon as, when that happened, we asked the committee to get information and we got it to you as soon as we got it. So- Well, we, we had asked for that four months prior till we finally got this, just on Friday. And I know that we had asked about that back over the summer.
So what I'll say is my opinion is, and this is just my opinion, I don't think it's necessarily right or wrong. I think if we go with option A, me personally, I think it looks terrible. I think it's going to look terrible. Or not terrible, it's just not going to look as good as it could have. I think it's mediocre at best. And I think, I, I personally want to involve the public because I, I mean, it is a, it's something you see when you're in Perrysburg. Your eyes are drawn to it. The silhouettes have been there for, you know, going on thirty years, it sounds like. And I know I notice them every time I go by or I'm at the soccer fields. I think if we go with option A, quite frankly, I, I don't necessarily like any of these options. I, I wish we would have spent more time and gotten public input. And now I feel like we're in a position where we might not get that and we may have some ticked off members of the public and I, I don't necessarily want to be the scapegoat for that, so.
I would, I would like to say a couple things. I have a question for Bridget. First of all, I never had any trouble with artwork. I believe it was the other half of the committee that did it. Second of all, didn't we already pay for basic paint plan in there?
Right.
So we would have to non-perform that and then rebid that section out, which could potentially be triple in price, triple if not quadruple in price because of the supply chain issues.
We might not necessarily bid it out, but that contractor, we would not perform the one line and then there would be a change orders or whatever the addition is. And based on the supply chain, could there be an issue getting certain types of paint? Possibly, as well as there would be the additional artwork done for all of these in order to make sure that the contractors understood the size and width of each letter. That's something that we've got to have, this contractor has to do a little bit more work on.
So-
Which is, which is fine because we need to do that for the base logo as well.
Right.
Because the nature is the one.
But it potentially could process a lot more.
It could based on whether we make a decision on an option that's not in the basement depending on what the supply chain issue is of the day.
So we would be waiting, spending money on something and not, in my opinion, being fiscally responsible.
So would we have had the same supply chain issues had we had this discussion about, because this is a foreseeable project. We knew we were going to be painting the water tower. Had we considered that it was going to be more than, saying more than the City of Perrysburg right from the origination of the project, the, the price point would be different, I would assume, rather than rushing it.
Talking about the origination of the project, which was months and months and months before we went out to bid it, it feels a different piece of artwork than we've been locked in with the price in the basement, even if supply chain issues-
Right.
But once we, we forwarded the bid, any change from that point on, which was sometime in the summer, any supply chain issue could have popped up prior to the actual change order being completed and you certainly could have had a price estimate of ten thousand four months ago and it could be twenty thousand four months later.
Right.
Until that is locked in and pricing was quoted by that company that then who are assigned, signed off on the prices of the change.
Yeah. And I, I, I agree with your sentiment, Dan. I don't like paying an extra amount for a project, but I, I view this one as having a particular public interest where we could have gotten public input on whether we want to spend a little extra on something like, and that didn't happen. And I, I, I'm, I'm just worried that we put, if we go with option A, we might have some unhappy constituents.
You're going to have unhappy constituents no matter what you do.
And I think it, I think it gets less if you involve them in the process.
I, I would say some people would agree and some people would disagree. Again, I think it's more important and prudent to be fiscally responsible.
I'm just want to, just want to point a clarification as well. When the, this project came up to Public Utilities Committee, there was no logo, no design that was presented to Public Utilities, so there isn't anything that was presented in order to be approved by the committee. The only, that what the committee asked for is an idea of what the logo was going to be or what was going to be on that tower. And I don't think anything was actually ever sent over. And it was more of a conversation, the Public Utilities, that the committee wanted to at least be able to have a conversation on what was going to go on there. And that never happened.
I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I was told that it would be the one logo. That's what my understanding, it was, it was the one that was on, that the new logo they went with, they made, I thought they made that clear. Maybe I'm wrong.
All that was ever said is that it would be Perrysburg if I recall correctly, but there was no discussion on what it was going to be.
So I was on that committee as well and I think all of us may have different memories about what-
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Committee have asked to transpire it, and early on, committee expressed interest in having an input on that and, and we never really did. And now maybe too late for economic reasons. And that's disappointing because this is a once in a generation statement on the water tower. And, and there's been a number of people who know Perrysburg simply because of that water tower. And they, they may not put heads in bed, but they're going to, it's a lasting impression. It's a community that, and we really do. And so, so we may well have missed an opportunity and that's unfortunate. There are artists that could have created tutorials and all use what we did, what C V B did and women part. I think most of that was just permission and given as a contribution to the community that was paid for by C V B because obviously they give you artists work for the value of it, putting many value because we all do. So we may have missed this opportunity and that's unfortunate. I don't even know how we can go with that.
Well, that's what's confusing. I mean, has the ship sailed or can't this go back with you?
No. It could be significant.
About a month, is that right? Say week. We would have to make a decision in about a month. That'd be pretty hard to involve the public in a month's time.
Point possibly, my understanding is-
Maybe with social media it can happen.
Due to the timing, you're about to drain the water tower between April and June and get it back to the service in that time. And it's not just about the painting, the project is about making repairs to the water tower.
That's what started all this. The main, general maintenance of the water tower-
The general maintenance of the water tower requires it to be sandblasted, entered painted after repairs are made to the water.
And it's very restrictive weather conditions as to when you can repaint, so that if we get a rainy summer.
No, I, I, I understand all that. Again, my, my one big point is, to me, this was an easy way to get community engagement and people caring about what's going up there. Yeah, some people wouldn't have liked the end result no matter what you do, but it was, I think as council members, one of the main critiques we were, we received and we're seeing it in the land, land heights is a lack of community engagement. And this was a, a simple missed mark to, to engage the community.
I'd like to still see if there, if there's any opportunity to engage the community. I think it'd be quite valuable at this point. I don't look at anything as being a waste. I mean, we've got a few items here that a couple of members have expressed that they don't enjoy, but would somebody has expressed, there's a logo there we thought we might include. So I don't think it's a wasted opportunity, but I think for public engagement, I think it might warrant a project like this. It's- Council needs to vote and give us some instruction then as to what they, what they're willing to pay. I mean, it's one thing to have public art and, and very clearly, if you're going to do a painting like this, if you were to do more than kind of just this, which also we gave you some additional prices. And there's some disagreement already as to whether that's the proper use of tax dollars when people are always saying we're spending too much money. Maybe a time to just be fiscally responsible is the right thing to do. If somebody wants to say we, we're going to authorize, as we, it's one thing to say we could engage somebody, but we, we would need this, it's a big thing, you would need somebody with some expertise and some skills, design and art to do it, rapper scale, do all that, probably have to do, engage that person. We, we need some, if council wants to identify an arm out that could accomplish some of that and we can act on that, put it in the amended budget then, that would be, that would be something, it's one thing to say we have different ideas and we haven't ever had a vote on council saying, we'll spend thirty thousand bucks, get us a good design, spend fifteen thousand, get us a better design. Spend, we tried to give you some ranges of costs. More than happy to listen to some direction from council to fund the additional work.
Well, in that, I mean, how do we know it's had a lot of experience?
Well, we haven't been able to engage anybody.
Well, and I, from the discussion, I don't know if there's time to do that now. I mean, is admission critical? We got to work on this water tower this year, Bridget.
Yes. It's also a key requirement.
It's become a public safety issue.
Yeah.
See, that's, I think, maybe we are out of time on this schedule, just to get, I mean, I'll look to Bridget to see, I mean, if, if you said to somebody, a consultant, we want to replicate exactly what's up there now, could you get a price on that?
Yes.
Well- But we're not doing that.
Yeah.
And I think-
But I can't get a price on an idea that I don't know what we have to deal with.
Given the timer straight, so this is what I would propose and I apologize, but I think this might be a good resolution. I, I, I would be willing to make a motion. I'm comfortable with the pricing for the four options and amending the budget and putting those four options out to the public because we have them. I would be, me personally, and this is something we can vote on in that motion, but I'd be okay spending an extra twenty-eight thousand dollars. I mean, and I would be okay adding in those, I think there's three other versions of it. I would be okay if that gets out to the public because I think we should still try to engage the public so they can be involved in this decision. So is that what you're looking for as a motion?
If we're going to hire up, yeah, officer in the near future, we will get that out to the public and-
I have a question, this is hard and fast.
The cost?
Yeah.
They are asking.
Yeah.
So they could come in higher.
Could be higher for the door.
They could be fifty thousand, potentially, hypothetically.
You always think of adjustment. We can make an adjustment to the, but, I mean, if, if council uses work instead of-
Right, right.
I, I would be fine to say fifty, assuming it's going to be under that. I, I don't, that's me personally. So I would make a motion that we're going to-
For all options.
For all options.
So that would be option, just for clarification, there, I did get a copy of option A through G. More than happy to put all, all those options out.
And, and I'm comfortable with the administration kind of figuring out how to get the votes or how to tally it or-
So I think I heard someone ask about replicating what is there now. It has to be, I don't know if I heard someone say, I, I said, I was just trying to see-
Cost.
How many, any, any of the cost. Could, could we just figure cost on that?
Yes.
The administration does not. Recuse that.
No, who can do that?
The current design. We have received numerous complaints from people both outside and inside the community about certain perception that that creates and, and I don't think that going forward that's a, if it is an image or it is a, if it's a representation of the city, that's not a representation of the city. I think it served its purpose well. Mayor Connor set that up. I think it very articulate, very accurately described the city, the community that was in early nineteen nineties. I think it served its purpose well, but I think it's time to go to the new...
Yeah, no, I'm good with that.
I, I, we'll back it up. I've, I've received some...
I was just trying to use that as a context, as a driver, as a device. So I figured that, you know what that's going to cost, if something, it's more artistic, if it's just letters, it'll be somewhat less. I was just trying to clarify.
Out of curiosity, would it be appropriate to try to, you know, Perrysburg is the Commodore. I know we have, I'm not saying that, but some silhouette of even the Commodore.
I think a watermark might look really sharp behind that.
We can, the silhouettes have a number of issues. What, I've heard from people about the water, about various type of water towers, perception lines. I'm very comfortable with those designs that kind of were created. We can have people maybe put it in the budget and see what people want to do at this point.
So do you still need a motion out of me or are you comfortable?
Right now, we need, before we spend any more money or time and effort from the administration, I think if council wants to say we're like...
So I'll make a motion that we're going to allocate $50,000 more to the budget to propose these designs.
For any additional options.
Yeah, for the additional options.
Or any additional...
Or any additional options. And hope that it may cost less than that as well. Not to exceed, right? Not to exceed $50,000.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Is that just for the design, the clarification that gets it done? The additional $50,000 for the design?
So the, the design is baseline, that is baseline.
Right.
Everything else is additional.
No, design, it's everything that, what you're asking, I think, just, so I'm understanding is, you would like to make sure it says not just the design, but that cost is the additional cost to paint and prepare and do all things that are...
Right. That's everything.
Additional cost for...
Right.
But I think that's the motion you intended made.
Yep.
That's the way I understood it.
I guess my only fear goes back to purchasing. Again, are we, are we not allowing for enough in there if someone chooses or if we do get this out to the city or to the residents and such is chosen, paint is extremely expensive right now and it's ever changing. I, I think we're assuming, limiting ourselves on the, on the dollar now, but...
And this goes to, the mayor's preference would be to not be, if council wants to put additional amount in the budget, that, you know, that's, councils, we do have some funds towards that.
It would be, it would be utility funds, it would be water and sewer funds, whether it is.
Which we did have this water tower budgeted.
Right.
Quite a bit higher from the get-go, right?
Yeah.
I don't recall the budget versus the actual...
Actual cost.
I want to say it was at least three figures that it was over.
Yeah, I want to say it was a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Six figures.
I understand council's point, but my point is I always am being told that our, our utility rates are increasing and they're going up and we should be doing everything we can to save money. But I understand the point and if council wants, the motion is 50,000.
I, I'm comfortable...
If it doesn't carry, then we'll discuss what we need to do.
I'm very disappointed that we would spend $50,000 on painting a water tower with all the other things that would be, that are much, that we could think of much better uses for...
Like $15,000 for cannons, revitalization of, I mean, it's along the same lines, but...
That's a big difference between 1,500 and 50,000.
15,000.
15,000, I thought was...
That was 15,000.
15,000.
But still, there's a big difference between that, we could maybe hire another, another officer or...
I mean, I'm disappointed that we're changing the design to begin with, so I mean, that's, I mean, I'm 40 years old and since I can remember, that was, that's all I remember Perrysburg. So, I mean, what we spent on it now, I mean, personally speaking and just reflecting some of the viewpoints of the residents, I, I, I don't agree with this at all, the design nor the process that has taken place up to this point, so.
There's pending motion, any other discussion?
So just Mike, is 50,000 in addition to what the administration's already funded?
Yeah, so my intention with that motion is, option A, I understand, is no additional money to the budget, which includes the city of Perrysburg written on there with the silhouette of the state of Ohio. The other quotes have variations of that with more saturation to give us a baseline of paint. The top quote we were presented with was option D. The quote we got on that, or the estimate, I should say, was 20,000. So I wanted to go up to 50,000 to account for potential price changes in paint and different designs that may require a little bit extra effort. That's what I'm basing my motion on.
But not limited to the designs that are...
Correct.
On there. So if something else came out better that we had in time...
But it is, it's...
We are sending it out to the public for comment.
That's up to the administration, that's exactly what, what this motion is designed to do, is to help you guys get it out to the public.
All right, I believe this is going to cause a lot of confusion. And I only say that because we're, we're going to put these A through G out to the public for, you know, to choose, and then, but we're going to say, but if you want something else, no, is that, is that what you're saying here? Because how do you, are we going to get, what if we get opinions on these five or six here and...
You can always put coyotes and roundabouts up there, but...
And then put none of the above as one of them too?
Well, I don't, I don't want to control how it reaches the public. I, I don't know, I'm not in Public Utilities. Maybe the Public Utilities can have a meeting and decide which designs they want to narrow it down to, to present above. I don't know. But I would, I would like to try for some community engagement, that's what my motion's designed to do.
We can always kick it over to Public Utilities for discussion, but...
This is going to add more time.
It is going to add more time, but I don't want us to waste too much time either and...
The more time you add, the more it's going to cost.
I'm struggling with the 50,000, that just seems not to exceed.
It's not to exceed, so it's not, it doesn't mean that...
It could be 49.
Yeah, it could be 28. I mean, the highest one so far is 28 of the ones that you showed us, but those are the ones with all the blue paint, probably, right? That's a lot of paint.
Yes, on January 24th.
Yeah.
And as Houseman Fuller mentioned, paint is strangely enough, one of those items that is currently fluctuating in the market right now.
And this is a special type of paint, so it's probably even more expensive.
Well, there's a couple of those options I think are butt ugly. Sorry, I hate to see you put those out there, but...
But you can ask for better...
No, please, Roger. Yeah, I, do we want to have a vote?
Let's have a vote. It's called a roll call and if it doesn't pass, well, anyway.
The motion gets seconded, please.
It already seconded.
Thank you. That's our call.
Roll call.
I need to read that motion. Please read the motion.
It does marketing, a good point about what are we going to ask the public and, you know, and I, I just think it shook the sail.
Yeah, I think we're out of time.
And it's disappointing because this is a signature, and I'm going to call it as a little like a letterhead on that. And it's unfortunate, but I'm not sure we're going to, I don't think we have the time.
Would you rather that we make a decision on the options that were presented as council and to say we want this option, let's move forward with it right now?
Yeah.
Would that make council more comfortable?
Well, let's, let's try and bring this in a little bit. We have a pending motion for 50,000 for the design.
So my, I guess maybe I need to clarify, the way I'm picturing, we're basically giving the administration approval that we're going to approve 50,000 extra to try to introduce the community with potential options or something other than option A in my, that... How you do that, I guess I'm viewing it as, my motion would allow the administration to move forward with something a bit more expensive to explore other options, $50,000. Not to exceed $50,000.
And you're saying, I'm sorry, I just...
I don't think there's enough time for...
Do you want that, to move forward with something other than just option A with public input?
That would be my preference, but I'm giving it back to the administration.
Okay.
However, we are in a time crunch.
Yeah.
So I'm not going to try to dictate the process here. I'm saying I'll give you 50,000, or, in my opinion, I'm okay approving an extra $50,000 so you can explore potential options other than A because we're trying to conserve money.
Well, the only other option would be is that we, as a council, allocate money and pick an option ourselves just to help with the time.
Yes, that's, that's what I was, I guess we could table that for next meeting.
Well, I wouldn't want to table it if we're, I know some people haven't seen everything. We can...
And that's why you could handle a vote on that.
All of council has not seen A through G, correct?
I have not.
I think I only have it because you sent it to me.
And that says that all of them...
I'll forward it to everybody.
Okay.
I'll do it right now.
You only saw the first floor. I think they were just doing it for pricing reasons, they were giving us some options there.
I just forwarded the email, hopefully everyone received it.
Well, if we can make a couple of comments about these, the options that are in front of us, or do you want to save that for another time?
Oh, we have a motion on the floor and we can see if council wants to move forward with that motion or if we want to...
All right.
You want to dispose of it or roll, roll call, let's vote.
I'll wait.
Well, yeah, I think we got a vote at this point. I mean, we might reintroduce the same thing 10 minutes later, it sounds like.
Mr. Fuller.
This is roll call?
Yes.
Vote? No.
Mr. Coleman?
No.
Ms. Patrani?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
Mr. Smith?
I'll just go with the term no.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
No.
Mr. Weber?
No.
Just retracting that we're just going to vote and, so, do we want to try to, does everyone have an opportunity to look at that now or do we want to wait two weeks and make that decision in two weeks?
We don't think we do any choices, I should, if we get to the next council meeting.
Okay.
I didn't review this because I didn't know, trying to pick the designs.
I didn't, I didn't. I feel more comfortable putting it out two weeks.
I, I would like to add something to this. I'm not against public input, especially in a timely manner. I think we need to take this as a lesson learned and look toward the future projects and on our committee, make a note of it before it gets this far.
Our other four water towers, they all have the Perrysburg in the script, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't, and I don't recall any public input on any of those.
And I'm not talking about just this, you know...
They're all relatively visible, except for the one downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one by the firehouse, I...
Right.